Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Once again, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to call South County Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, made 24th order. May we stand for that invitation and please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. We have our veteran, Robert Baker Senior. Excuse me?
Let us pray. Our still kind heavenly Father, we do acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our being. We thank you for all of your many blessings. We thank you for everyone who is present today for our meeting. As we convene this meeting, we invite your presence and ask that you abide with us as we go through every item that is before us. We ask that you continue to bless our men and women who serve our country in uniform, especially those who are serving in harm's way. We ask you to bless people all over the world who are experiencing all kinds of tragedies. And we just ask that you work on the hearts and minds to help people learn to love one another better and to find ways to prevent the tragedies that are happening. And as we go through our agenda, we just want to thank you for being the ultimate provider to help us to have a balanced budget that we will be working toward and to help us to take a really close look at the capital projects and the penny project that we are looking forward to bring into fruition. These are our blessings we thank and ask in the master's name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Please join me in giving the pledge of allegiance with your hand over your heart, please. And join me if you will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
U.S. Army Veteran Robert Baker Senior served our country from 1959 to 1962. He retired as the Assistant Fire Chief with the City of Sumter after serving thirty-three years. Veteran Baker also owned a fire extinguisher business for forty-five years until it was recently sold. And he is also a lifetime member of the American Legion Post Fifteen. He has been married to his beautiful wife Barbara for sixty-six years. They have two sons, one of which is our Sumter County Coroner, Bob Robert Baker Junior. They also have four grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. Veteran Baker currently lives in County Council District Five. Thank you for your service. (applause) Mr. Baker? Yes. It is my pleasure as the representative for County Council District Five to present you with this certificate of appreciation coming from South County and from the Veterans Affairs. We appreciate your service and we're just thankful that you are enjoying great quality of life and still being able to be with us. And congratulations on having sixty-six years with the love of your life.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
God bless you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are changes.
We have a motion to approve our full approval of the agenda. Right. We move the property executive that we approve our agenda and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Right. Motion to approve the minutes for our regular meeting for Tuesday, made attempt. Our budget workshop for Tuesday, made attempt. And our budget workshop for Tuesday, made seventeen. So, we're second. We move the property executive that we approve the minutes for those three meetings and the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Next item on the agenda is man use matters. RZ twenty-two oh four is through.
Good evening. RZ twenty-two oh four is a request at twenty-five fifty Highway two sixty-one south being dropped forward by Alfonso Golden, the property owner, to rezon approximately five point nine acres of property from agricultural conservation to general residential. This is the property in question. It's actually comprised of two separate parcels. It's just south of the intersection of Goldage Road and Highway two sixty-one south. Currently, it is heavily wooded. It is across the street from Manchester State Forest, and it is undeveloped today. This request is in an effort to facilitate some more intense residential development than what would be currently allowed in the AC zoning district. Right now, the property is a combination of two lots that were plotted as part of Fuel Class Section Two in nineteen ninety-three. Except for a point seven acre lot of property in West Cape subdivision, which is like twelve hundred feet south of this site, most of the lots in this constituency are at least one acre size or greater. This property itself is zone agricultural conservation, has everything around it. The minimum lot size in the AC zoning district is one acre. As it stands today by right, this lot could be divided into five separate parcels based on our current zoning regulations and compliance with the ordinance. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at the comprehensive land use plan and how it impacts the property. In this particular instance, this is influenced by the conservation and preservation area, and it's just across the street from our military protection planning area. Both of these comprehensive plan designations support larger lot development, in particular what the AC zoning district already does. And in the conservation and preservation planning area, we look at keeping things at one acre or greater because they're addressed to properties that are influenced by flood plan management areas, their sensitive wetlands, possibly in the area, or we have other issues going on from a environmental standpoint that we want to preserve from this larger areas of open space. By and large, general residential zoning district, which allows lots as small as six thousand square feet, is incompatible with comprehensive plan designation for this property. The other issues that we have to consider are the impacts of sewer and water. At this point in time, there is not public sewer available to the property, so that would also make a point, a six thousand square foot lot likely unfeasible on this property. For all of these reasons, planning commission is recommending denial of this request. The GR zoning district is generally compatible with comprehensive plan designation for conservation preservation, and the current AC zoning classification already allows five lots of development on this property. And have you answered any questions that you may have? Don't believe Mr. Golden is scared.
Any questions? Okay, prior to second reading, we'll have a public comment section where persons in the audience can speak for or against this rezoning request. Public comment section is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Curtis Marshall, and I'm the immediate property owner to the left as you look at the property. The sign at the road said to rezon for commercial. So I was confused, being residential, the letter said residential. We, my wife and I, have only concern for it going commercial. We already have the storage place on the other side of us, and that wasn't even filed when they built that. I don't know what the plan is for the residential. If it goes one acre, I don't think we have much problem with that because it's a couple neighbors. Pretty much our neighbors are burrows, which we really like. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Anyone else wanting to speak, council? Chris, any of us, he's on any request? Hearing, hearing none, the public area is closed. The vote for the nod. Sir? If the move and property executive that we deny the request to rezon, twenty-five fifty, two sixty-one, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm in agreement because we count on our planning commission to give us professional help and assistance and guidance. And if they are recommending that this project be denied, then I'm going to support that request.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to deny. Second reading, all in favor of denying second reading? Please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Hearing none, second reading is denied. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next item on the agenda is President Member Ordinance Number twenty-two nine seventy-three.
Mr. Chairman, council members, good evening. I wanted to present tonight from the podium because we have a PowerPoint slide to help demonstrate the work that we've done with the budget and also demonstrate the input that council has given to staff. Let me start by saying thank y'all for your considerable work on this budget. It's not been an easy budget to work through, but each budget presents its own unique challenges. When I move to a slide presentation, I would like to state that while we are talking about the budget ordinance, Number twenty-two nine seventy-three, I will also be sharing the information in reference to the following ordinance, which is Budget Ordinance twenty-two nine seventy-four, as it relates to the bond. Okay, real quick overview, of course, you're familiar with this format now, the schedule we are down to. We have covered all the information that you need for the budget conversation, starting with the appointed officials, personnel changes, general fund expenditures, which we've covered in the public workshops, along with the capital bonds discussion, ARBA funds, other funds, and other agencies. So based on the information and the comments that were made from council in those workshops, we are providing the following information. You can see that we are still on schedule, on task. We are in May, and we are, we have already had first reading, which was a couple weeks ago, the council meeting. And tonight, what's on the agenda is the proposed second reading of our budget. You will see that we have scheduled for next month, third and final reading on the budget, as well as a school board presentation. There we go. All the areas have already covered. And let's jump right into the overall budget conversation. So you can see that on four twelve, that's the information that we started with. At that point, we were at a one point four million dollar deficit budget. On five-ten, we brought it back to council. We made some modifications to the expenditures. We were one point one million dollars at a deficit at first reading. On the seventeenth last Tuesday, we had a workshop with council. At that time, what we brought in was a five hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred eighty-two dollar deficit. And based on that conversation and some other input, which I'll get into a little bit later on the expenses, what we are presenting tonight for council's second reading and budget approval is a balanced budget of fifty-five million four hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We will get into the capital request as well. Okay, the general fund revenues have not changed significantly from the start. What you will see is that in the property and other taxes, we have increased it by one mill, and that's what we are presenting tonight, a one-mill adjustment, which will account for the one million three hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars in that category. Also, at the very bottom, you can see that we have added in this reading a fund balance usage of five hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars to cover that information. So let's talk about the overall general fund personnel and operating expenditures. We brought up at the last meeting at four-thirty last Tuesday, we were notified by our insurance carriers with South Carolina Association of Counties that our property and liability insurance have gone up. There are a number of factors. We've had further conversation with the staff at SEAC. Our insurance rate has gone up approximately twenty-five percent, which is equivalent to three hundred thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, which is again significant to our budget. We want to make sure that we have ability to build that in. That's where you will see that cost increase for operations. I'll give a brief explanation to that. On average, the state of South Carolina, and there were a number of factors involved in that, the cost of replacement of buildings that are damaged, that's one of the large costs. Also, the number of claims and cases they've had in relation to law enforcement have gone up significantly statewide. So at twenty-five percent, we are seeing increase twenty-two point nine, almost twenty-three percent of that cost increase is due to those matters. We had a couple of situation incidents last year locally. It caused our mod, our to be increased slightly, so that's how we come to be now three hundred thousand. But again, that is built into this budget. That's all we wanted to cover on that side. Everything else is pretty much as we discussed about the budget process. I wanted to mention the personnel summary. There are a number of things in there that we actually had no control of, but we certainly don't realize those costs, and we discussed it at length with council, so I won't spend a lot of time here. An eighteen percent increase in our health insurance. You can see that number is just over four hundred thousand. One percent increase in retirement. Those two items are required. We have no choice. Then we also, thanks to council, and I appreciate y'all considering this, with our workforce, we've posed a three percent COA adjustment for our employees. There were also a couple of new position requests. There were actually a number of them, but the ones that we've approved in this budget are the ones that are offset with other revenue streams, such as fees in particular, or possibly ARBA funds. And then there's salary adjustments, a small amount in one department is offset with revenue. Those are building, but those are personnel-related issues. Jump real quick over to the other agencies and other funds. We went, I had a great deal of conversation about this at the last meeting, and council went ahead and approved or recommended that we fund these agencies at the level that they requested, with the exception of one new agency. Counsel covered this wasn't the time to add a new agency, and so all other requests are being honored. I'll show those quickly. So the amount of adjustment this year in budget is thirty-nine thousand one hundred and three dollars. I won't put through each one, but this is a list of the other agencies and those impacts. Again, council's had a chance to review this, there are no changes. These are the other agencies as well. As you can see, the last one was a new request. That's the only one we did. Let's jump into the other funds category. You can see that there were requests from the solicitor and public defender's office for some additional personnel-related items, council has not approved those at this point. We did want to mention that Fire District, the two Fire Districts, one and two, had a small mileage increase. See amounts forty-two thousand dollars in District One and sixty-four thousand dollars in District Two. Also, there was conversation about Central Carolina made requests of seven additional mills, council has not approved that at this time. So let's jump over to the capital bonds conversation. Again, this will be led us up more to the next ordinance, but I want to cover that because there were some things that they were funding here. So the, if you recall, the total amount of capital requests is just over thirteen million dollars. We've identified roughly eight million dollars worth of those capital expenditures that we would like to recommend for prudent. The biggest one, the one we were discussing, the fund action tonight, is on three and a half million dollars. Get into a little bit more detail on it, so I want to jump to that page. And I would like to remind council that three and a half million dollars for the capital bond represents the fifteen mills that council has allocated for the capital bonds over the previous years. We do have allocations in ARBA, road user. Speaking of that, I think it just commenced. So you can see what we've not, what we're not funding at this point in this budget request is just over three and a half million dollars. Hey, the bond, and this is again the three and a half million dollars that we're proposing, you can see what we have listed there. I'll go through those in a little bit of detail because this slide doesn't completely illustrate that for you. The detention center is a new conveyor, the largest portion of that money is a new conveyor system at the sheriff's operation, the detention center. The EMS is new CPR devices, a new full-overdrive truck that would allow us to have easier access to remote areas of county. And then also, they call striker chairs, which is basically the journey-type chairs that go to the trucks, back to the offices. Fire District One, best generators and personal protective equipment. IT is software and some power supply, the power supply devices. Probate are computers, public buildings at the larger one, the judicial center, courthouse, and paper hall. Public works, one hundred fifty-seven thousand is fuel stations, a new fuel station improvements. We've got an overhang that needs to be replaced, as well as a new lift in the shop. Breakfast D's is software, recreation or mowers and a turf maintenance piece of equipment. The sheriff's department for this category would be the security upgrades for his buildings, ATV, some laptops, and a message board. And again, there are more items, but these are the bigger costs associated with this line. Vehicles, this is all other county departments, not including the sheriff, that's the county fleet, replacement of a number of trucks and vehicles. And then the sheriff's office, sheriff vehicles that we appropriated about fifteen annually. That's the cost, along with equipment that goes along with it. Veterans Affairs, we have funding tables and chairs they need for their operation. And then the last voter registration are sixteen new laptops. So that's the list of the three and a half million dollars that here that y'all will give them in the second quarters. I was talking briefly about the ARBA related funds. So we did have, like I said, of the three point eight million dollars appropriated in this capital request, the balance of that eight million dollars that we're funding, the detention center has funds in there that's eligible for the ARBA funds along with IT. Landfield, we discussed resurfacing some of our landfields, five hundred thousand dollars. Public Defender, we have some equipment, and then a number of our public buildings are actually eligible for ARBA funding, so along with the three point five, the three point eight on the ARBA. There are other funding sources for some of the capitals, which makes up that balance of eight million, one million three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We've discussed the road user fee. That legislation over in Columbia that we discussed is still pending, but if that goes through, then we will move forward with the other works, road user requests. If not, then we'll pull this request. The landfill, solid waste, that's some computer equipment out there. We've got two projects that are here for. First one is associated with some site work, matching a grant, as well as a resurfacing funds to resurface, resurface a portion of the airport. The second item is matching funds. That's why we're asking for it to come from the fund balance. Over a four-year period, we would replace that or reimburse the fund from FAA in part of a large budget. ARBA funding, council took a vote on this last week, so we're in the action on it unless council meeting, council approved that we're expecting to see any time, ten point three million dollars. I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we propose to use three point eight million dollars in our capital request. Personnel requests include the funds for the public defender's office, as well as a couple other smaller positions that will be, both of that going to the public defender's office. Water utility infrastructure, we discussed this project as well. We own two water utilities, Wastefield and Shallow. We propose to draw down additional dollars from the state of South Carolina through rural infrastructure authority, but we need to have matching dollars set up for that, and that's why I have two names there. Broadband infrastructure, we've been discussing this for quite some time in our community. We want to make sure that we have countywide broadband within, instructed by the state, who at this time are addressing this issue with state budget, but we were instructed to make sure that we have matching funds available, make sure that our entire county has broadband coverage. Thus, the million dollars, and council has made through two and a half million dollars to go toward additional road resurfacing projects, paper projects. So that's accounting for the ten million and three hundred and four thousand. So a quick review, what staff has recommended tonight, the council to consider for second reading, is a balanced budget with a one-mill, one-mill increase. Put up here is local option sales tax credit offset. I know that's important, and I've heard that from members on council. The way this works is that we have the ability, based on the revenue that we're receiving for local option sales tax, to apply a credit, and we can increase that credit this year based on the revenue stream, so that we can offset the one-mill. Simply put, without putting the math up there, we anticipate one-mill tax increase on a hundred thousand dollar baggage. I'll try to do this. So one hundred thousand dollar baggage is actually going to be a four dollar increase. Local option sales tax credit will allow us to roll back nine dollars worth of baggage. So the net balance, the net balance on resident per hundred thousand, all things being the same, would be about five dollar reduction in the taxes. So I know that's a little bit complicated, and then I tried to cover that in this last article, but I want to make sure we had a chance to reemphasize that at this point. So the fund, the fund balance, we also asked that we use five hundred and eight thousand dollars for the fund balance. It was a small number until we got this recent information about the insurance trust, so we propose to increase that to five hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars, which allows us to have a balanced budget. In expenditures, we have health insurance, we have the one percent retirement, we've got the COA, we've got property lines insurance, three hundred thousand dollars built into this, as well as for the other agencies, thirty-nine thousand dollars. Capital fund, eight million six hundred and eighty-four thousand and thirty-six dollars in total, out of the thirteen million that was requested, and I didn't put too long on that, you can see how it all weighs out, coming from which funds. ARBA, again, recap, there's ten million dollars there, I would propose to spend that ten million dollars. And with that, sir, obviously, this is the schedule, everybody's trying to finish out the year on the twenty-fourth, we propose second reading on the budget ordinance. We have a next scheduled meeting, will be June the fourteenth. If the workshop's necessary, we'll have it. If not, we'll just have third reading on our county budget. At that time, we also anticipate that you will get a school district presentation for their budget request, and then schedule the twenty-fourth for any action that may be required from the school district on their budget request. So with that being said, sir, I thank you, and we entertain a motion for second reading on the balanced budget.
Prior to having second reading, we will have a public hearing.
Prior to having second reading, we will have a public hearing. So at this time, public hearing for the budget ordinance is open, anyone wishing to speak for or against the budget, comments, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Brenda Williams is my name, I basically am in county two of researches, and I represent the family unit incorporated, five oh one C three nonprofit charitable organization. And the budget, I did not see any reference to monies set aside for a little walkway, a bridge crossing the tight road area where five people have been killed by vehicles over the past twenty years in Sumter. There must be some money set aside for a multifaceted approach to the food desert that exists in that part of Sumter County, the city of Sumter, Sumter County District Five, Board One. Right now, Board One has really no representation because representative has been critically ill for some time, therefore that part of the city has no representation on city council. Our county really must do something in reference to that part of the highway, it's private brands highway, where people cross the highway to go to the store and buy potato chips and Coca-Cola and cookies and toilet tissue and items like that, and they cross a six-lane highway. And most recently, you all will remember that a little boy was killed as he drove his bicycle across the highway, and the truck just did not see him, and he's resting, and he's afraid now. So please, ma'am, please, sir, set aside some monies, no matter how much it costs, it's a win-win situation. There must be a bridge crossing that highway, and also encourage businesses, business owners, to buy some of that property up over there and set up a store, like a Babel's Grocery Store or Dollar General, Family Dollar, we have to wear the ball to talk to these businesses. Let's get some help for those individuals living in that part of the county, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. No one else wishing to speak? Hearing non-public commenters closed, we entertain a motion, do for second reading.
Mr. Chairman, before we take a vote, I'd like to comment on the cost of living of COLA, three percent. And I'm doing this because I'm looking at the cost of goods and services, particularly goods. Went down the day, hit gas for my car, put in forty dollars, and it didn't even move but a quarter of a ton. So if I'm experiencing this, and, you know, I don't want to rag anything, but I have a good income, I have a retirement income, military, so forth, but if I'm experiencing this hardship, then I know people who work for the county who's making thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars a year or something. So when we say we're going to give everyone a three percent, that sounds cool, but a three percent for someone who's making thirty, thirty-five thousand does not compare to a three percent given to people who make it over fifty thousand. But yet, no one is going to ask, when you go hit gas, what is your economical status? Are you low income, middle income, or high income? You're going to pay the same price. When you go in the grocery store, when you check out, you're going to pay the same price as someone middle-class, upper-class. So you're standard of living when inflation is going down. You don't stand still, you're either moving forward or you're moving back. And that's what we're experiencing now with this inflation, a lot of our citizens are moving back. They don't have the same standard of living that they had last year because goods are going up and they're paying an increase with that three percent, nowhere near cover the amount that goods and services are going up. Now, I, I, we agree that we're going to give the three percent, and I went along with it, but I'm hoping that in the future, when we do this next year, that we look at a way where we can give the low-income people more than what we're giving the upper-income people because really they're, it'll be the same. So with that, I just wanted to share that because I said, if I'm experiencing hardship, I know they're experiencing hardship. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, have a motion. Have a motion, don't have a second. No motion in the second, have second reading on our budget ordinance number twenty-two nine seven three, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to just reiterate and respond to Dr. Williams' concerns. They are, they're well-taken and have been completely considered, and you will hear more about it when county administrator goes through another presentation this afternoon. Thank you.
Any further discussion? You have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye. All close. And the budget ordinance number twenty-two nine seven three is approved. And next is the ordinance authorizing issuance of bond, which the next one was already discussed, that's ordinance number twenty-two nine seven four. Prior to passing second reading, we'll have public hearing on this as well. Public hearing is now open, anyone wishing to speak to council concerning the obligation law, please proceed to the podium. Hearing none, public hearing is closed, have a motion to approve, being chairman, I have a motion to approve, but I think all of that, the director said, the number that is showing three point five million dollars, bond issuance, there is no increase to the tax rate, no mileage increase to the tax rate. Have a motion, sir. Motion in the second to approve the issuance of the bond, ordinance number twenty-two nine seven four, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All close. Ordinance number twenty-two nine seven four is passed. Next item on the agenda is a gift from the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission, from the sales, from the commission chairman, Mr. Robert Claude Smith. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, for the benefit of the public, I'm Bob Smith, and I'm chairman of the twenty-twenty-two Southern County Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. Other members who serve the commissions are Peggy Blanding, Kim Hatchell, Stevie McCall, I'm Randy, Brenda Whitley, and R. Wilson, who serves as vice chair, and many of them behind me, so thank y'all for, for being here, and the school was here five o'clock for detailed presentation to our county council. Southern County Council established this six-member commission by resolution R dash twenty-two oh two on March eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Since then, the commission has held seven meetings averaging over two hours at each, and worked diligently to consider proposals for funding capital projects within the county area. The commission then formally had the referendum question that should appeal to ballot for section four dash ten dash three-three-zero D of the Code of Law of South Carolina. The entire ballot question has been submitted to county administrator and to county council. The thirty-four projects shown on the ballot are identified as follows. One, county fire trucks. Two, emergency radio and pager upgrades, EMS by our police. Three, county paving and resurfacing. Four, city fire trucks. Five, forensic center at sheriff's office. Six, State Road Fire Station reconstruction. Seven, industrial land purchase for Gibbside. Eight, Black River Industrial Park infrastructure. Nine, Pocutawago Industrial Park infrastructure. Ten, US three-seventy-eight Safety Connection Project. Number eleven, intersection safety improvements. Twelve, Bobby Richardson Park improvements. Thirteen, South Main Street building acquisition. Fourteen, rural gymnasiums. Fifteen, Delane and Debo's Community Centers. Sixteen, South Sumter Gym. Seventeen, Patriot Park Expansion. Eighteen, Mayfield Town Hall Center. Nineteen, downtown accessibility renovations. Twenty, museum complex. Twenty-one, Swan Lake Trailhead Accessible Playground. Twenty-two, accessible playground improvements countywide. Twenty-three, accessible playground improvement citywide. Twenty-four, Pinewood Sports Complex. Twenty-five is public services building. Twenty-six is Shop House Park and Greenway Trailhead Enhancement. Twenty-seven, downtown parking facility. Twenty-eight, airport facility upgrade. Twenty-nine, Central Carolina Technical College Classroom conversion. Thirty, Pinewood Area Roof Hating. Thirty-one, city-county community sidewalks and activity paths. Thirty-two, Pinewood Area Sidewalks and Bus Shelters. Thirty-three, community-wide acquisition of distressed structures. And thirty-four, Pinewood Area Light Removal. The ballot question, I think we'll be short there, provides a full description of each project, and more detailed information about each project will be available on the Southern County website. All of these projects meet the requirements of section four dash ten dash three-thirty of the Code of Law of South Carolina. The one cent tax will be collected for seven years. The ballot question also includes authorization for a forty-million-dollar general obligation bond, which will be used to fund several projects in the near future. The one cent sales tax collection will be used to amortize the bond.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and again, thank you for all committee members for your hard work putting these projects together. And now entertain a motion for ordinance number twenty-two nine seventy-six, first reading.
First of all, approve.
Second. It's been moved to properly second, until we have first reading on ordinance number twenty-two nine seventy-six, any discussion?
Just wanted to clarify, we're not adding another penny, we're just a continuation of a penny on the last penny tax, and so this is not, we're not adding another penny to your bill. Yeah, I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I want to commend the committee for the work that they did. They gave considerable attention to the rural area, rural areas rather. It was a comprehensive work product that they produced, I liked the work products, and I want to encourage citizens to take a strong look at this list, and I think you'll be pleased, and encourage all of you to support moving to Southern Ford. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, in response to Dr. Williams, just wanted to point out that the project that she adhered to is, alluded to, is number ten on that list, and she said it right, it is multi-faceted, it involves so many entities, and if you would look at the reading of it, of the amount that is being proposed would be to leverage other funds, it's a huge project, and I hope that it will come to fruition.
Mr. Chairman, needn't we say this, I said it at the meeting, I want to commend the commission for what you've done as far as the quality of those projects are very important, and also, the penny tax has done great things for this county. We have to realize that it was a penny-type project that had us the ability to attract common property, and so you know what this means to us, and so I'm going to encourage, and I want you to encourage all the people to vote for it, because this makes something better, and I'm going to, so with my statement, which I made, when you invest in yourself, others will invest in you. That's a written proposal, thank you.
Any other comments? Have a motion and a second to approve first reading of ordinance number twenty-two nine seventy-six. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? First reading of ordinance twenty-two nine seventy-six passed. Again, I want to thank Mr. Smith and the rest of the committee for a job well done, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is a committee report, I want to name that, the committee report was for a special meeting, and Mr. Bob Smith just gave a summary of what that meeting was about, so we will not discuss that. Our next item is a report from council members on other meetings and trainings and our conferences. Hearing none, more reports, Ms. Brandy.
Yes, sir, the planning department will have its meeting on tomorrow at three o'clock. Additionally, in your packet is information about the building report, and I believe I also place in your packet information about Sumter Soil and Conservation District. If it's not in there, please let me know. There is a schedule for, and some information at your seat for ours, please do not leave the brown envelope here, take that one with you, and that is it.
Thank you, Ms. Brandy. County magistrate, more reports, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. Coming up to the public comments section of our agenda, any members of the public present wanting to, if I desire, to speak with council, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, can I make a special request, because I got represent two different groups.
What's your name?
My name is Reginald Evans, I'm from the Morris College Coresville area. I represent two groups, one is ministry, and the other one is Northside Neighborhood Association, okay? I want to go with the Northside Neighborhood Association first, and take three minutes. We put in a request for this penny sales tax to improve the interest of Morris College. I didn't see it on the list, I didn't see any, the last public hearing. We also put in a request, and they told us it was too late to have our request put in, so I was wondering if, before the second reading, would you consider the two requests from the North Maine, as we said, Ward One, council member is sitting right now, and I was looking forward to working with five and Crossbell to get the total projects done to improve tomorrow's college area. The next group that I represent is Men in Diet. The next group that I represent is Men Indeed. We put in a request with the city to operate the public access channel. We have the building, we have the equipment. Cable spectrum charges three dollars and fifty cents per month as a franchise fee. The FTC requires that they provide a public access for community channel. We're proposing that we operate that. I do not know whether the county has an agreement with FTC, but we would hope to work with somebody on your staff to see whether we can operate a channel for the county. We think that we can employ ten people in this community television station that will be located downtown. Hopefully, we can put a studio out in the Mayville area, and we put a studio out in the Bragg area. Currently, right now, everything is moving to e-commerce and social platforms. I think we can take this community TV station, train our young people to move towards using e-commerce. If you're no longer focused. So, I think we have Spectrum, FTC, and I don't know what else right here have with it. But the county and city are collecting close to two million in franchise. I don't know what the county is. We just propose to take an agreement, and we'll operate on that. So, hopefully, y'all can consider the proposals we made for the Morris College area and the last one that we submitted on the penny sales tax. And that will hopefully be supported on the referendum that's coming up there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Anyone else wanting to speak to council? Please proceed to the podium.
Good afternoon, council. I need to change my voice, please. Two-two-nine-zero, Beth Church, Rhode Island, South Carolina. This basically is an appeal and a reminder and an invite to have you come to the memorial. Remember an honor date that's going to be taking place at the South Side Gym, and it is going to be taking place from twelve PM until two PM. And we've invited all of the veterans, combat soldiers, who might want to come out and partake of some little refreshments, nothing new. But we do have persons, one president, who does some fantastic fine of fish. So, that will be, that will be one of the things that are served, and it is for families. So, as they come through, they will be served and, not like it used to be, because we're still in the process of working on it. So, we invite you to come out. It's going to be at six thirty, South Banning Street, South Sumter Street in Sumter, and the gym is a drive-through event, and we'd like you to come. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Anyone else? There are none, public comments closed.
Ms. Hughes, I think.
I was getting up.
Oh, okay. You normally raise your hand at them.
Yeah.
Hit me with your stick, one or the other.
Maybe I shouldn't say what I'm going to say. I'm Jackie Hughes from Sumter. I've sat here and listened to several reports about the Pike Road, and it's nice that you alligated through the penny tax, six million, to do something about that. But we kind of know why those people are getting hit and killed. What I would like to propose, since we are still concerned about them, is that all these other places where there are wrecks all the time and people are getting killed, that maybe we should investigate that also. I mean, it's only fair play to, maybe there's something wrong with these other sections, and I'm sure that the county or the city could give us those areas that are killing people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Anyone else? Public comments closed.
Due for a jury.
Second. We can probably second it. We adjourned. Any discussion? There are none. We are adjourned.